Suzanne, take it away.
All right, well, thank you. I have placed a little packet on each of your, in front of your spots. It's got the City of Council Bluffs 2015 savings on the front of it. There were three series of bonds that were refunded as part of our activities with the issuance of the new money this year. The 2007 A bonds were refunded as part of, they were combined with the new money that we went into the market with today, and those will be combined with the 2015 A bonds going forward. The 2008 bonds were advanced refunded by a separate 2015 B series today we went into the market for. And then also, the 2007 B bonds will be paid off with cash on hand in the debt service fund on June 1st, 2015, when they are callable. So, just wanted to lay out all of the activity here so you could see we generated some really good savings for the city today. Total gross savings estimated to be $443,483 in debt service. That's all coming out, that's coming off the debt service levy. And estimated annual average savings around $88,600 per year. So, that, you know, each of the different series have different savings based on their call dates and their amounts and such, but just wanted to give you guys an update that we got some good savings today. And then behind that are the bid tabulations for each of the individual series. We went to market today via competitive sale, and we received five bids on the 2015 A bonds, which again are the new money projects that we're issuing for the most high P borrowing and the current refunding of the 2007 A. Included in those five bids were very large syndicates, underwriters grouped together in syndicates, and there were 39 participating firms. So that's an indication of the strong desire to bid on the end to buy the city's bonds today. The winning TIC and the winning bid was received from Robert W. Baird, which kind of runs our Midwest Syndicate. They were the largest group of bidders, with the true interest cost ranging from 2.41% all the way to 2.67%. So that's just different underwriters' opinions, their ability to sell the city's bonds, and how aggressive they were in their bidding. So, the $8,300,000 GO Bonds Series 2015 A ended up with a final TIC after recising at 2.42%. So that's very good. These are 15-year bonds, so that's a, that's a very good interest rate for the city for those bonds. Any questions on the A?
I was just gonna ask generally, given the fact that interest rates are starting to creep up a little bit, has, has the city come close to exhausting its, its opportunity to develop further savings? Or as these things come up and immature or other offerings come available, is there gonna be additional opportunity in the future?
We monitor that on a continual basis. I will say that just as far as interest rates historically have gone, towards the end of last year, they started to creep up a little bit, and then in January, they plummeted again. And so, we, we had originally planned to sell the new money a little bit earlier this month, but because the refunding opportunity worked again, the advance refunding, we, we postponed the new money sale so that we could take advantage of, of the advance refunding opportunity.
And actually, the reason we postponed it was because of the petition that was passed around. So that was a cost to the taxpayers.
Yes, yeah, and we could combine rating fees, and there were some additional cost savings by, by postponing and combining everything and selling in one day as well. So, and I will say that, you know, it depends, it depends on where the bond's priced initially and where the market is today. It's, it depends on how, how many maturities are left in the market, how much, and, and every time we sell bonds, we, we include a term that's a call date. So, most mortgage, like a home mortgage, you can refinance it any time, it's financially beneficial. Well, in municipal bonds, there's a certain date where we say we're not going to refinance until after this date. And so generally, that's a seven-year call that we, we use. The market standard is 10, but we have found in Iowa, we can get away with seven with no pricing penalty. So that gives us a little bit more flexibility. So, until we get within a reasonable amount of time to that call date, sometimes it's not, most times it's not financially beneficial to refund until, until we get closer to that call date. So right now, we have taken advantage of everything callable in 2015 and callable in 2016 that works. So we do monitor that, that's part of our, you know, continued support of the city. And anytime we would see opportunities, we'll bring them to everyone's attention. Absolutely, good question. Any other questions?
And then that calculation associated with that debt service is impugned in the current debt levy that's in the budget.
Yes, I believe the city did a pre-levy, I believe for the 15 bonds you have approved, you've done the pre-levy process. So these, this 2015 A is taken into consideration in the 16 budget and will be included in that budget.
I think it came in a little lower maybe than what they estimated, so.
Yeah, so we restructured to make sure.
A little higher, but not much.
Yeah, I think, yeah, and.
Hundreds if not thousands of a percent, so.
Yeah, the rates did start to creep up. I know on the advance refunding, on the Series B, we did receive four bids on the Series B from 38 firms. There was just one bidder that didn't participate on the refunding. And the refunding was much shorter, so we saw much lower interest rates. You know, as, as, as you may know, the, the municipal bonds are bid over a curve, over a yield curve, based on how long each bond is outstanding. So the shorter the bonds, the, the lower the rates at the bottom of the yield curve, so.
Or the interest rate risk, the rest of the interest rate will fluctuate.
Say that again?
It's, it's an adjustment for interest rate risk.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Sorry, I gotta go.
No, it's okay. The longer they're outstanding, the more, you know, the higher rate you're gonna pay due to interest rate risk and other factors. That's correct. So the TIC on the 2015 B bonds ranged from 1.33% to 1.46%. So like I said, they're a little bit shorter, so we see the lower true interest costs associated with the refunding. Hutchison Shaki is a Chicago-based firm, and so they were the winning bidder on the B, so. And, let's see. As far as pricing goes, the city is rated AA2 by Moody's. I think last time I was here with the council, we kinda talked a little bit about the Moody's rating. They revised their credit methodology, they've done some different things, and the city has a very strong credit at a AA2, which is considered high investment grade. And the, the, the tool that's used to compare pricing and how well you priced in the market is called the MMD AAA Scale. And overall, the A series, which is the larger, longer series, priced 34 basis points, which is point, 0.34% over the AAA Scale. So very strong pricing for 15-year bonds today. And the refunding, because it was shorter, priced just 22 basis points or 0.22% over that AAA Scale. So, that was very strong pricing today, we're very pleased with that. Any other questions for me?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Do, would you like to have Suzanne here tonight, or?
I don't think that's necessary.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. On the agenda, we also have a strategic planning presentation. We promised you this, the second meeting in January, the first meeting in February. So we're a meeting behind, but given the rental inspection and what was going on, we pushed it back. Wendy, are you gonna do this? We're gonna give you a relatively executive summary briefing, but.
Okay, so it looks pretty thick, but we'll move through it really quickly just to hit on the highlights. One of the main points of this planning session was really to get everybody on the same page and make sure we're all going in the same direction. So we have a common vision, and all the department heads and in the mayor's office, and everybody is again going in that same direction. So we started the day, if you look at the second page, going through the chart that we have here, the, looking at identifying our mission, vision, values, objectives, strategies, and initiatives. That's where we got through during this session. And the bottom two pieces will actually be implemented as we roll this out across the city and out through the rest of the employees. Go to the next page. The mission statement, and this is where we kind of define this, again, this is just kinda what our goal was. So our mission defines the fundamental purpose of our organization, and it contrasts on the present. So, so what do we exist for, what do we want to do? So as a group, we brainstormed and we thought about what was important to us as a group and, and being the city, and what does that mean? So if you look at some of these top phrases and words that we came up with, we'll go through it real quickly. To serve, ensure the safety, well-being, and success, improve and promote, highest quality, attractive place, protect, preserve, and promote, attract visitors and new residents, quality of life, foster community pride, engage community, and passionate leadership. So then if you go to the next page, again, after several iterations and conversations and activities, this is the mission statement that we came up with as a group. To improve the quality of life and the attractiveness of the community for current and future residents, visitors, and businesses through exceptional services, community engagement, and passionate leadership. So that's the overall mission statement, again, so that we're all in that same direction. We know this is what we want to be or what we should be. The next slide talks about the values. And again, if you look at this, enduring beliefs shared by our members regarding what is good, they are a major influence of what we aspire to and how we work to achieve it. Again, through several activities and brainstorming, we talked through this as a group. And on the next page are the values that we came up with as a group. And we had pages and pages of these listed, and then we had dots, and everybody went out and had three dots, and they picked their top three. So this is the ones that everybody agreed to and the majority of the group came up with. So if you look at this, it spells out service-oriented, positive attitude, problem solver, strong work ethic, collaborative, integrity, accountability, and leadership. So not only are these important as our current employees and how they act and do their day-to-day business, but we're going to take this into consideration when we're recruiting and hiring for new employees as well. So then on the next page, you move on to the vision. The vision describes what an organization would be like if it fulfilled its mission to the fullest extent possible. So on the next slide, again, as you'll see, we did activities and we brainstormed, and we talked about some of those top key words and phrases that were important to the group as a whole. So I'll walk through these quickly as well. Approved appearance, vibrant West End, innovative solutions, working together, quality opportunities, place to be, place to live, investment opportunity, opportunity for investment and growth, dynamic community, healthy community, and preserve our past. So again, this vision is what we want to be, what we want to become. So then on the next slide, we took all of those thoughts and brainstormed again, and through multiple activities, this is what we've come up with our vision. Council Bluffs is the original and is once again the place to live, learn, work, and play in the metro because of our opportunities, innovation, leadership, and history. After that activity, we went through a SWOT analysis. We identified the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats of the city. I won't go through all of these, but you can review, review these on your own. But what you'll see is as we go through the rest of this presentation, and we talk about the objectives and the strategies that we're working on, that they all derive from something within here. If it's a weakness that we've identified, some of those objectives talk about how do we overcome that weakness? If it's an opportunity that we want to go after, some of those objectives will go towards that opportunity as well. So on the next slide, it talks about those objectives. Basically, these are the things that will help us achieve that vision. So these are the quantifiable measures of that vision, typically three to five years out. And we broke these down into three categories, again, going back to the vision. We're looking at the live, work, and play aspects of that vision. So on the next one, it talks about the top-level objectives, and this is for the live piece of that. We wanna look at population growth, property tax valuation and increases, increased activity in the building permit section. We wanna do more accurate reporting that reflects our data for crime stats and the crime data, and then look at the higher, higher education levels of citizens that are required for new jobs in the graduation weights, rates. And again, looking at all of these, we wanna compare to other metro communities as well, and making sure we're in line with other communities. The next slide talks about the objectives for the work area. First one being looking at the median income of the area and increasing that. And then the second one being increasing the percent of owner-occupied housing. Today, we have approximately 61% of owner-occupied housing, we'd like to increase that as well. And the next slide talks about the objectives in the play area. We'd like to look at how we can increase our hotel motel tax revenues and increasing the use of city facilities. And then building upon that, we go into strategies. Strategies are decisive allocation of resources. So how do we accomplish those objectives, and how are we going to allocate our resources to do that? We came up with six strategies as a group, and the next slide goes through those. Number one is to develop a str, a long-term plan for funding and sustaining infrastructure. Number two is to define and market our unique identity and brand. Number three, develop partnerships with key public and private entities. Leverage our riverside assets via West End development. Number five, increase efficiency and enhance customer service by improving our processes, both internally and externally, and enhance our recreational facilities. Then we talk about initiatives. Basically, our initiatives are how we implement those strategies. So they're activities and projects aligned to realize the strategies. And again, broken down by each strategy. So the first one for strategy one, long-term plan for funding and sustaining infrastructure. We've came up with three ideas. And under this, keeping in mind, these are high-level buckets. There are several activities that could happen under each of these, but these are the, the major buckets that we look at that are important for that. So the first one is revising our CIP process, talking about the expenses and revenues. Second one is to develop alternative or new funding sources. And the third one on this one is to provide a new police station. Those are all important under that first strategy, number one of the long-term plan. Under strategy number two, define and market our unique identity and brand. We have three as well. Implement an easy, low-cost internal newsletter. Define the need, scope, alternatives, refunding, and resources, providing a coordinated communication resource. And work with outside resource to define and market our unique identity and brand. Strategy three, partnerships with key public and private entities. On this one, we wanna define our improved relationship with the county, the chamber, Iowa West Foundation, school districts, and waterworks. And then the last one, number six on here, is to investigate combined riverfront planning and event coordination with Omaha. Again, focusing on that riverfront area and, and making sure that's key, that it's a regional effort. Strategy four, leverage our riverside assets via West End development. On this one, we came up with three. Develop, plan, and implement the initial phases of Playland. Develop, plan, and implement initial phases of West Broadway. And develop, plan, and implement initial phases of Burst Avenue. Strategy five, enhance customer service by improving our processes. We have three on here as well. One is to begin our lean journey. And again, that's kind of reviewing all of our processes and procedures and seeing how we can make things more efficient. Review and renew our documented policies and procedures throughout the city. And implement business licenses for improved service and communication. And the final strategy is number six, enhance our recreational facilities. On this one, we have convene a public trail system to create a new trail plan, or summit, I'm sorry, public trails, summit. Number two is advance discussions to investigate, decide, and provide, if appropriate, a major indoor fieldhouse facility. Number three is to retool selected facilities to better host regional events. And number four is update the park's master plan. So that's kind of what we came up with after the end of this session. Once it's approved, the plan will be to roll this out to the entire workforce and go down to the next levels of, of the city. And again, as we talked about, we went through those first categories on that first page. What we need to then look at rolling this out is the departmental goals and objectives, and then the personal goals and objectives, and that'll be how we roll this out.
And so, our hope would be that at the next council meeting, you'd take this home, give it some consideration, some thoughts, make some notes, come back with questions if you have them. And then either vote your support or lack of support, depending on your position, and, and so that we can, again, adopt the strategic plan, use it as a roadmap for guiding the city in the next three to five years. And, and so we, we're not, there's a whole lot going on tonight that we didn't think was appropriate to ask you to vote on it tonight, but we wanted to get it in your hands and get you a chance to look at it and think about it and come back with feedback, so.
Is this electronically available, the set of slides? In other words, can, can the public access this?
Not right at the moment, but we can make that accessible.
I think that'd be useful for folks.
Any other quick comments? All right, thank you. All right, so we'll go to the agenda. Anything on the consent agenda? Anything on the public hearings?
On 5C, it's the Bass, Bass Pro Shop. It's the notation about the engineering fees by HTM, and I was wondering if that was rolled into the overall project cost of $360 that was set forth in the package.
Terry, do you know, or John, Larry's not here. We'll get you that answer. I don't know if you can send a text to Rick maybe and find out.
I, I didn't know if maybe they were, they were hired by the insurance carrier or by the city. It's something that you don't.
What had happened?
Traditionally, the engineering fee is part of the project to get it done, so. We've done similar things. Also like restoring lighting in the park system from the hail damage and stuff that they pay for all the observation and getting this done.
Yeah, I, it, the thought just occurred to me.
One of the related issues with that project was that it was not installed according to specs. And so we had to hire an engineering firm to clarify or, or validate the fact that they didn't install it according to specs. And so I assume it's part of the, but that's an assumption, and I don't wanna make an assumption.
I, I was just curious because it indicated that the funding for the project came out of the insurance coverage, and I just didn't know if that was rolled into it.
Many other questions on the public hearings?
With regard to the budget 5A, you know, we've had considerable discussion about, though I don't think as, as a group, about positions not otherwise authorized directly by the charter and whether and to what extent the council must legislate those. And so the idea I'd like to float to my colleagues is to the extent the proposed budget would, would appropriate for staffing changes that are not called for in the charter and haven't been expressly approved by the council, that I, I don't see how we're in a position today to appropriate for them. I, I really do believe they have to be created and/or moved by resolution. And so I, it's tough for me to, to look at appropriating when I'm, I'm not entirely sure what all the changes may be. And, and I don't think we approve them, and I do think we have to.
Can you be more specific?
Sure, but for example, well, the ones I, that I'm aware of, for example, the moving of the auditor, the adding of a second position in the mayor's office. And, and I wanna be very clear, I'm very likely to support these ideas. I just need to see specifics on them, and I, I think this body has to approve the creation, or particularly if a, a position's moved between departments.
My position would be that's not true.
I understand.
The, the council approved the positions initially. And then it's my job as the mayor to manage the city. The auditor worked in the finance department. The auditor's role is to be separate and oversee activities that occur in the finance department, to have a clear separation of duties. So you approved that position just last year at the request of Art Hill, and.
Was, was there a resolution on that?
Yes.
It was, to create it in the finance department.
And so, all I did is felt it was not appropriate to have the person whose responsibility to have oversight over the finance department work under the supervision of the finance director. It's, that's a pretty logical decision, I think. The other job we moved was purchasing. Purchasing had primarily done, purchasing down at the Public Works Garage. It is a citywide function. We instituted centralized supply, purchasing something that hadn't been done before. We're, we're starting to create inventories of frequently-used items. We wanted the employees and management to know that that purchasing position, that again has been authorized previously by the council, represents the whole city and is a resource available for use by the entire city. And I believe, and Dick, you can speak to this, as far as my having a secretary, I think that too is authorized by the charter. If it's not, I'll do away with the secretary, and we will leave a voice message that says that the council does not want me to have a secretary, and so that we'll get back to you whenever we can.
Well, I think it comes back to the question of, of the new position. And there, there was the, the hiring for the administrative assistant as well as new position of chief of staff. And, and what, what I guess Councilman Watson is suggesting is, is not, not revolutionary. Tonight, in, I think it's Resolution 1558 with regard to the creation of IT positions, very nice job was done of setting out in the staff package the, the purpose of, of those positions, the rationale, the, the funding, and, and then that was backed up by, by a resolution. I think that provides a very fine example of how this can and ought to be done when it comes to new positions being, being created that aren't otherwise provided for.
According to the city charter, all positions must go through that process except for what's in the charter called an administrative assistant, which semantics I call a chief of staff, in that that is the common nomenclature today. And so, for, as, as I stated to you, a couple of you before, if we have a city charter that was voted on by the people, which is a common theme of yours, Mr. Ringenberg, to then come back and say, I disregard what the people wanted. I, I, I will give that responsibility to the city council and allow them to choose my chief of staff or the position for my chief of staff when it's clearly in the charter, then gives you the opportunity at some point in time to say, I take away what I granted you earlier. And I don't think that's appropriate. There are clear separations of duties by the charter. I think I've operated according to those. And I think this action apparently is trying to circumvent what the charter says. And, and you're exactly right. I, I don't think it has anything to do with purchasing. I don't think it has anything to do with the auditor. I don't think it has anything to do with me having a secretary. I think it has everything to do with something that you lauded me for, for having an effective negotiating team in union negotiations who is then objected to by one union steward, and now you're coming forward and wanting to change the city charter because of that. And that is, in my mind, inappropriate.
With.
And you're holding the budget as hostage to do that.
Okay, I was gonna say, we did ask for an opinion from Dick on this, because I will agree. I was slightly confused, not about any one position, more about the addition of now two positions, the whole thing. And Dixon has a very nice on Friday opinion on all this. However, in that, and maybe I read it wrong, but in that, what I gathered is you weren't quite certain that that second position, whatever one it is, I don't care, but the two positions had not actually been authorized. So that would be my thoughts on it, is that we do need to authorize a second position.
My thought, and what I tried to convey, is that the chief of staff position is something that's totally authorized by the charter.
Right.
And was actually contemplated, I think, if you read those articles. And was actually contemplated, I think, if you read those articles that I put in that packet. There was some discussion back in eighty-six that the mayor would essentially hire a city manager and essentially assign most, if not all, of those duties to that person. All those options were available and were left available to the mayor in that charter form. The position of the second position, the secretarial position, if you will, I think I've got to believe that there's monies in the budget. And even though that maybe there was not a specific action regarding that position, that generally the council has approved funding for administrative position, or I'm sorry, secretarial work in the mayor's office. And I don't think, I'm asking the council to take a big leap of faith to get there in when I look at the charter, when I look at what the actual new government committee was trying to put together, and I look at the actions of this mayor in the past.
One of my questions would be, at one point, the prior mayor had an administrative assistant and a secretary. Wouldn't that have been, at that point, when that would have been approved? And by virtue of having it, wouldn't it have been generally approved by that council at that point?
We have to.
Nothing ever came up when it was like that before, evidently.
Well, there is a rule in the law that just because it may not have been done right before, doesn't make it right now.
And the irony of all this is not lost on me, that all this discussion happens as we negotiate a union contract.
Well, you know, with all due respect, speaking for myself, it has nothing to do with contract.
The complaint that you got has nothing to do with that.
No, sir, it does not. You know, and I, looking at the information, I concede I was incorrect as to the position of administrative assistant, that I do believe, even though the wording of the committee left much to be desired from a legal point of view, I do accept that that is in the charter. I concede that point. I was wrong about it. I do not believe, as a matter of government, that when we create a position, when we discuss about what the position does, we have, if not always, almost always discussed where the position is. Otherwise, we just say, we need a secretary two, or we need an auditor three. No, we say we need it in the finance because we're moving somebody from such and such to such and such for this reason. Why, all of that superfluous, unnecessary if it can be changed at will without our consent or even knowledge? And to, a budget should appropriate money, it shouldn't set policy. We should set policy by resolutions, and then the budget funds them.
Otherwise, I agree, and I think that's what you're doing. You're using the budget to set policy.
No, respectfully, I think positions, if we approve the budget as written, it funds positions we have not created.
I don't believe that's a correct statement.
You know, I guess I'm curious too, if it had nothing to do with the letter.
These positions, there are no added positions or the same positions.
But my question is, though, that even before the current secretary was hired, there was a young man on college break, I think, that worked that desk. And we were introduced and to the new chief of staff, nothing was said at that point. Teresa was brought in, introduced to everybody. Nothing was said by the council at that point. And that's why I'm curious as to whether or not the letter is then, because I don't understand why now? Why suddenly is there a question when there were never any questions up until now?
I will, I'd be glad to answer that.
Because I believed it was in there and.
Because I believe the recommendation, the opinion of the city attorney suggests, if not outright states, I believe it states, though I could be mistaken. The way I read it, if we approve the budget, we've in effect ratified legally as we've said it's okay.
Right, but that was given to us after the last meeting.
That's why it comes up now.
I think we can clarify that.
But why did it come up at the last meeting when we asked for the legal opinion?
Yeah.
I asked for a legal opinion about a year ago.
Because when I read his opinion, I asked the very same question. It would appear that by your last paragraph, you're leaving some leeway as to the current positions. And Dick, what was your response to me? That prior.
What I was trying to distinguish in that last paragraph is that it does not require specific council authorization for that specific position. It just has to, this council has authorized the mayor to do the job. He's given, he's responsible for doing, performing the job. And after all these positions are lumped in under the mayor's direct charge, it just stands to reason that there has to be some administrative assistance, some secretarial assistance, by today's terminology, to assist him and his other department members in performing their functions.
And the auditor is not a new position. It's a position you've authorized within the last twelve months.
In the finance department.
The purchasing position is not a new position. And the finance department is in general governmental over which I have oversight. So I, you know, I'm just confused and actually personally offended. And I know that people have said, oh, every time I try to talk to him, he gets upset. Yeah, there's been, we've talked between some of us, but not all of us. I'm one of the not all of you. Nobody's ever bothered to come talk to me. And Melissa, I would say, brought it up at a basketball game in front of a bunch of people that were standing around. Not probably the right place to talk about it, but.
Well, I did bring it up, and the email record will show it, early on in the administration about how I think that ought to be proper. I did ask for a staff opinion from the department over which we are supposedly have control, and I didn't get an answer. I've brought it up repeatedly since. I still don't get an answer. I have brought it up to you. You do get upset about it. I know we disagree about it, but I do take issue with the idea. This is a surprise. I brought this up.
We gave you the charter. It clearly, in my opinion, and I'm not an attorney, and clearly in my opinion, stated that I had the authority. The conversation that happened previous was not about the auditor and purchasing. It was about the fact that whether or not.
They hadn't had.
I could hire a chief of staff. I thought we'd resolve that twelve months ago. Again, the irony, the timing of it was ironic to me. And frankly, I don't get it. You know, we're trying to do a good job here, and we're feeling like we're handcuffed. I don't get it.
No, I don't think anybody is trying to suggest otherwise. I think what we're asking for is somewhat the same process that was exercised for the IT position. And I would say that.
Which was a new position. These aren't new positions.
But if the IT department's person is moved to Public Works, is it your opinion that you can do that without our approval or even notice to us? Because we've created the position, and you can do with it whatever you want.
I would think that I probably could. You know.
I would have to agree with that.
Yeah.
Isn't that moving money between the departments?
Well, as long as the position is being funded with the correct money. You couldn't move the IT division to Public Works and throw.
Fund it with road use tax.
Exactly.
Well, I would suggest that the last auditor's report would disagree with that. I mean, we were dinged twice for moving amounts of money between accounts without doing a budget amendment.
This would be not moving it from between accounts.
And you're saying as long as I don't do that.
Well, if we put everything in one department, then by definition, you can't get in trouble for moving it around. But my point is, is putting it there in the first place was not approved. And I have never, as to my recollection, I could be mistaken. I don't believe I've ever voted against any of your recommendations for the creation of a position or for the ones that we have any say in, who gets in the position. I don't believe I voted against them either. And I don't disagree. Your arguments on the merits about needing secretarial help, about the idea of the auditor, maybe it's a good idea to have it separate. To me, those have a lot of sense to them, but my point is a more fundamental one. And with the greatest respect, it's one that I've talked about since the very beginning. It's the checks and balances.
And that's what I'm talking about today. You are treading across that check and balance and managing the city. You've set the policies and procedures under which the city gets managed.
We did.
Now you want to come in and dictate how it gets managed.
Well, we approved an auditor in the finance department. And if that needs to change, then you need our permission, in my view.
All right.
I think what we're really requesting here is just oversight, not management, but oversight. And we're not going to be delaying the budget in order to do that because we're not going to be able to take action on the budget tonight anyway. I suggest that we're going to need to extend the public hearing on the budget because the budget was never posted on the city website. So it's rather difficult to have a public hearing on a budget that the public doesn't have access to.
It would have been nice if you.
It's not a requirement, though, is it? To be posted on the city website's a requirement?
Well, how are we going to have a public hearing on something?
The budget was publicly posted, and the newspaper is required by law.
The full budget booklet was posted in the.
The required.
Just the required notice. The complete booklet is never published in the newspaper. Just the required publication.
Because the current budget is posted online, but the proposed budget is not.
Did you have a copy of the complete budget in your office available for viewing?
Yes.
Was there one in the, take it over to the library? I know some have done that in the past.
Well, speaking of that, we were supposed to have gotten a full copy of it under the city charter by no later than the second Monday in February so that we would have time to look at it. And we didn't. So, you know, so I don't want to harp on that point other than to say we can't very well be criticized for wanting more time when we weren't given the time we're required.
If you want more time, you can take more time.
Indeed, we can.
All of you know, we were without a finance director.
I understand that.
I would tell you that if you think that I'm shirking my responsibilities, I've had one day's vacation in fourteen months. I'm pretty much the last person to leave here every single night. And it certainly is offensive to me.
I haven't heard anybody.
I'm making a policy argument. It doesn't matter who's in which chair. I'm worried about the precedent it sets because none of us will be in these chairs forever. I certainly don't plan on it and wouldn't, in any event, be. It's not personal. It's a policy dispute. I know we disagree strongly, but truly, it's not personal. It's nothing to do with you personally. I'm not questioning your commitment to the job in the least.
So when we've had that conversation, then I guess, does that lead to budget questions? Or is, or we just move on and, you know?
Well, no, I'm happy to put forward some budget questions. I think what, again, what Councilman Watson is asking for is just that we have a staff package and a resolution prepared for the next council meeting in advance. In advance of the vote.
I won't do that. And so you need to get with your clerk, get something on the agenda for next week. We will need to probably prepare something for the state to show we're in default of filing our budget on time. But I, again, it is. And you've got legal counsel here. I understand you're all attorneys, and I understand that the way for attorneys make money is, I still remember the night when Dick gave his opinion, and I said, well, Dick, I disagree with that opinion. And he said, well, I could support the other side. I know how that works in your line of work. But again, you approve the positions. There is no new money for the positions. The management of the city is prudent in what I'm doing with the positions. I don't get what the objection is, other than you want to put me under your thumb.
No, we want to do more than just annually approve the budget. And I suppose, I guess, not even rubber stamp the rest. We have a role to play, and I know you know that.
You do, and you've played your role, and you created the positions, Nate, which you did less than a month ago, or less than a year ago.
How do we provide oversight of our position that we have, don't even have notice, is fundamentally changed from what we approve?
It hasn't fundamentally changed. They're performing the same job responsibilities at the same pay wage. They're just not sitting in the same chair. And every time I move somebody to a new chair, I don't know that that's something that needs your blessing.
Well, we do it, for example, last year with finance, whenever we move, and I'm sorry, I forget the titles. Let's say it's an accountant two to an auditor three.
That's a job, that's a job classification change, and we bring those to you. Historically have done that. We'll continue to do that historically. That's not what happened in this position.
So if you change a classification, that's.
It's not a classification change.
It's a complete departmental change. It'd be as if the president moved the head, somebody, the deputy head of the Department of Transportation to defense. I mean, it's a major change.
It's not a major change.
But when you change the line of authority and put it directly under the mayor's office, that does change the position significantly. I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I probably agree with it. I just, I take issue with the idea that we have no say in that. I mean, we create and abolish departments, and we create positions other than the ones in the charter, which I concede I was wrong about, administrative assistant.
And the department's not changed. The position has not changed. The position is changed to a new department for very logical reasons. And I guess I just don't understand, again.
I wish you'd put that forward in a resolution.
I'd like to point out one section of the charter.
I don't need to.
Please. Nate, and this was an issue that the new government committee had a big issue with. Some of the members in that committee felt very strongly that the mayor should just directly supervise the department heads.
Sure, a true, strong mayor system, yes.
Actually ended up with the language as follows. The mayor shall have the power to supervise and direct the official conduct of all officers, departments, and employees of the city, except for the city attorney and the city clerk, and their staffs. Furthermore, the mayor shall have the power and authority to employ such assistants and other employees of the city for which the city council has approved the position generally. Now, what was the big point of discussion there was, can the mayor go into Greg's office and tell one of the engineers to do something? And under this charter, as it was approved, yes, he can. He does not have to go through Greg.
And I don't dispute that in the least.
So that being the case, he could also go directly to the auditor and say, auditor, do this for me. That being the case.
Indeed.
That position becomes very mobile at that point, so long it's under the control of the mayor's office.
There's a difference between day-to-day control, which of course is the executive function, and I do not intend in any way to trample on that. But the creation of it or the moving of it is a legislative act.
Oh, your council disagrees with you. Bring it up in a resolution. Let's have a council vote on it. It takes three to pass it. It takes four to pass over my veto, which I will guarantee you'll have. And then it will take a legal battle because I'll hire an attorney.
I won't, I cannot in good conscience vote to fund a position that I believe that we have to create.
Then don't vote for it. You don't, we're not voting for a position tonight. We're voting on the budget.
Well, you have said before, a few times to me, that if we approve something in the budget, like for example, when I've said before, well, I don't know, what about this? And you say, well, you voted for it, you voted to fund it. And I don't want to be in that position again of the idea of, well, Nate, you can't ever bring this idea up again because you voted for my budget to fund it. And now I accept your argument on that. I think you are right about that. If I do vote for something, I have ratified it, and I just in good conscience disagree. It's not a personal disagreement. It's a disagreement over checks and balances.
Again, for clarification point, I think Dick's position was that in past budgets, you have funded those positions. And so they are existing positions underneath the current employment structure of the city.
And because that's now his official opinion that he's given to us, that confirms for me my fear that therefore I cannot vote. I was of the opinion previously that I could vote to fund a position and still not, and still have reserved the right to my argument that the position being moved or changed required council control. And I'm now of the opinion, because of council, that I can't do that. I can't have it both ways. So I can in good conscience fund something that I think that has to be created by us.
Okay, yeah. I don't know what that means, but I guess that means you're not going to approve the budget based on that statement. So, you know, I don't know how to counter that, Nate. It seems like.
What you have, it sounds like very, very good reasons. Again, I've never voted. What, you have, it sounds like very, very good reasons. Again, I've never voted against one of your, that I can think of. Maybe I have, but I don't, I can't think of one. I, I don't know why that's so difficult to put in a resolution so that then we can, we can talk about it. The public can see it. You have made a lot of fantastic changes in the city government. I, I think having it, having the public see it and having it go through the legislative process is not an insult to you, but is a compliment for the work. And, and I just believe that's the way it's supposed to be done. And I know we disagree.
We certainly do disagree. And, and you know, frankly, I, I don't know. I'm at a loss, to be honest with you. They, uh, I don't know what to tell you. It's my job to manage the city. You've authorized the positions. Again, just because of the fact of where they sit, they're not, they're performing the exact functions that they were hired to perform with the exact job description. And, I don't know, that your legal counsel's giving you a different advice and you refuse to take his counsel. So, I guess we are where we are.
The only thing that I will add is, you know, as to the changing, that's, you know, Dick's saying one thing, you're saying, I don't know that. I still think though, and maybe I read it wrong, but I still think in Dick's opinion, that that second assistant, unless we authorize it through the budget, he is saying that we have not yet authorized that position.
I don't think he is. And you can ask him again. He just said that. I thought...
We were talking about the other, the changing around. So, for clarification, Dick, only if we authorize this budget, then that's how we've generally authorized that second position. Is that correct?
If this budget is approved, that position is generally...
Because otherwise, it has not yet been authorized.
My knowledge, you know, and I don't, I don't know how the finance department was structured. If there's a, was a position there that was eliminated, that was administrat- or that did secretarial services, America moved that position over to his, under his rep control too. I, it's, I don't have a good enough handle on what the staffing has been.
I'm confused as to what we're talking about.
Cause we had asked Dick just...
He's talking about Teresa's job.
Correct. Just the second. And like I said, it's not a person. I'm not worried about like Teresa or Wendy or, it's more just the overall, is what's in there, the way it should be, or should, did we miss a step along the way? And again, it's not anything to do with, I think Wendy's doing bad, I think they're both doing a great job. And everybody I've talked to has said, you know, I've spoken to several people just and, and we've heard great things. It's just making sure we're not skipping steps so that, yeah, the next person, whoever it may be, that's mayor or a city council, then we're not saying, "Oh, well, they can just add positions and it's just gonna get approved because that's how we've done it." If we really were supposed to be...
So, the fact that Inky and Cheryl Lester filled that role for twenty-five years has no merit, Dick. I, you know, I'd...
Does it change the charter?
You were for, you know, under first administration, mayor's off, mayor elected, we had three positions at office. There was never any, any formal action to approve any one of those.
Cause there wasn't any required, would be my...
And that's, you know, this is a much tighter reading of the charter than what was put to it last time. And, you know, I just, this was never an issue when Mayor Hanifin established his staffing levels.
I wasn't on the council and...
Yeah, we, we can't control what a prior council...
I understand, understand.
But, to go back to what Dick said, is that through budget approvals, through the years, Cheryl Lester worked as a secretary, Inky Westfall worked as a secretary, Teresa Beauchamp works in my office as a secretary. Now, under your reasoning, all these people out here that have jobs, don't have a job until you approve this budget because other councils weren't in tune to what the law was. And so...
I think that, I think that has to be true.
You know, that, that's the ration how I get to.
I think, I think that has to be true to fit your opinion. I, I would find that that's not true, but...
That Cheryl Lester didn't hold that job and that Inky Westfall didn't hold that job?
The idea that appropriate, that a budget which appropriates money for, for activities and, and positions that have otherwise been approved should legislate too. I suppose you could do it that way. It's totally loosey-goosey and it...
I'm just taking the words from the opinion your attorney gave you. I'm not putting my own words in there. That's his words.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate that's his opinion. And I, and again, I, I asked for it again, over a year ago, and I couldn't get it. You got it the day before the hearing.
I got it. I got it a year ago when you brought it up. I got a copy of the charter.
I didn't, I didn't get any opinion. I got a copy of the charter, which I'm not stupid.
I read.
I can find a copy of the charter.
Yep.
It's not an opinion with the greatest respect.
But I thought that the charter was pretty clear to me. And I thought that alleviated all concerns until...
No.
Two weeks ago when you get a complaint from a union steward.
Again, I have no idea how that has anything to do with this.
Well, that's...
I wish you would bring forth some evidence or withdraw your, your...
Cause doesn't always equal correlation, but in this case, it, it appears to be closely tied.
And based on what?
On the fact that it wasn't an issue until...
I guess I have to produce emails.
And all of a sudden, it's an issue and, and all of a sudden, I'm hearing you're using the budget against me to drive your issue. So...
I, I don't think that, that was ever the intent.
Honestly, it's not personal.
And, and I, I do recall seeing emails and conversation on, on this in the past. So, this is not, this is not a, a new issue.
A year ago, cause Wendy, Wendy Schultz was hired a year ago, there was a question and a copy of the charter was disseminated and the question stopped. A year later, a week, the same week is a complaint is filed. Now, it's not only renewed, but in full bloom.
I have email correspondence on this issue as late as August, I, I believe.
I have brought it up and you know, I have tried to bring it up in person, but it, it has been a rather difficult discussion to have. And I'm not a fan of having fruitless discussions that'll make people mad.
Yeah, I don't know when you brought it up with me, other than two weeks ago.
Well, I've got plenty of emails to the effect. We have discussed it. I, granted, our oral, oral conversations aren't in emails. I, I just take, you know, I, I have said nothing against your character or your opinion. You've been consistent throughout. But you're accusing me of inconsistency or opportunism. And that is, there's nothing further from the truth. I think it's, it's, it's very obvious. I, I do not think I can be accused of being an opportunist. I, I, I have always said what I thought. And there are many times it's been very much against my self-interest to say it. And I could continue to do that as long as I'm in this chair. And so, the idea that I'm up to some political games, that isn't me. And, and it's, it's quite sad. I, I thought you knew me better.
Well, and, and frankly Nate, I thought I did too. I, I honestly am hurt by the fact you wouldn't come talk to me about this. By the fact that you would work behind the scenes to, to try and get this implemented. You know, I, I just...
I, I have talked to you and you, you just, you have disagreed through the whole process. Fair enough. We disagree. But the idea that I haven't talked to you, it's just not true.
Well, you talked to me two weeks ago and I did disagree. But then I hear that now the hostage is the budget. And so...
Well, based on this opinion now, if I acquiesce in the budget, I will, I will go against what in my conscience I believe is an incorrect use of, of, of power. And so, based on that, yes, now I, I am in a quandary. That's where we are.
Nate, could I ask you?
Yes, sir.
I'm trying to identify where our opinions vary. And I, I obviously...
Yeah.
I know you agree with some of the things I've got in here.
I do, quite a bit.
Now, do you agree that the mayor can appoint a chief of staff, three of the councils?
I do. I was incorrect on that before. Yes, I concede that.
Do you agree that the mayor can take a generally budgeted position and take direct control over it versus having it stay in the department it was one time assigned to?
No, because that's not approving a position generally. I think that's, I think that's where we disagree. To me, generally doesn't mean under the sun. It means the position itself, but not the person specifically in the job. Otherwise, when we get these, I, I, to me, to me, everything we do is supposed to have a purpose. And so, when we get, for example, when we created the auditor, which I think was a, a very good decision, uh, we were, we were told it was in the finance department. Why, why did all that matter if it doesn't matter where it's at? We could just say, "You know what? I need to hire a secretary. I need to hire an auditor. It's gonna cost this. I think we need one because of this. Will you approve it or not?" No, we're told it's gonna be in this department and it's gonna answer to this. And, and it's usually to try to save money wisely, we say, you know, this person, this job's gonna change over to here. It'll change the grade X to Y. I mean, why do we do all that? What, what, that all has to be superfluous. In other words, useless excess. I, I mean, why, why are we wasting everyone's time if that means nothing?
So, when we hired the auditor, we eliminated a position.
Yes.
We created a new position.
Mm-hmm.
As required, brought it to the council to do that.
Yes.
Does it not make sense to you that an auditor who, who reviews activities in the finance department probably should not be the direct report to the finance director?
I agree, but that's a substantive argument that you could make in a resolution. And I would be, I can't think of a reason why I would not support it. It would obviously depend on what it said. But, that makes complete sense in theory. But I just think the point is, is that it can't just be done without, if the only say we have over that is approving the budget annually, then it's no say at all. That's, that's not, that's, that's using appropriation process to legislate. And with the greatest respect, that is my specialty. And, I know what I'm talking about.
May I just add one quick thing here? Um, there was notification of the movement of the auditor and purchasing positions under the mayor's office effective January one to the council on November twenty-fifth, which was then over all approved at that point. Now, I don't know all the details behind it, but I don't know if Marcy and Dick may want to follow up on that. But, the mayor's office did send, Marcy sent an email to the council indicating this is what we were planning to do. So, we can do further research on exactly where that went, but that was a notification.
That may very well be, but that, there is a difference between, between being told, "Here's what the city's gonna do, city council," and, "Do you like it? Is it cool?" I mean, I, I think we're up here to do more than that.
Right. That's why I said a follow-up will need to be done on the outcome. But I know the notification was there. I don't know what all the follow-up was.
I know we didn't approve a change in, and based on the new opinion. If I, if I vote for the budget, I will approve it indirectly. And, and I just don't think, because if, if it's a great idea, and on that one, I happen to think in theory it is a great idea, then why can't it be brought forward as a resolution so that the public can hear about it? We can talk about it. You also get buy-in. I don't see what the problem with that is. We're not telling you how day-to-day that person's being used. I'm not going in there and saying, "No, you need to do this." I'm saying the position's created, we fund it. I, I don't see the problem. I mean, if I approve it by the budget, I'm still, as a member of the council...
You didn't approve it by the budget. You approved it when you ratified the position. And I manage the city.
But you don't manage it entirely. There is a second elected branch of government and that's where we disagree. We do set the underlying policy. You have considerable, I mean vast, vast latitude as the executive in the day-to-day functioning, which we shouldn't interfere with. But, but we also have the power of oversight to make certain that our broad outlines of the positions we've approved and what we've said gets funded is getting that, done that way. That's our job. It's not personal. We have to do that or we're not doing our job. And I'm saying here that I believe, I, I'm doing my job in looking at this and saying, "You know, we didn't approve this. How can I fund something I didn't approve?"
And I'm, I'm, I'm telling you that I think your legal counsel is telling you, you did approve it.
I really take exception. Nate, I think you're trying to reach into some of the powers and duties the charter has given to the mayor.
I, I appreciate that, but it would've been nice had you, a department under the council, given me an opinion when I asked for it, rather than going to the mayor with it a year ago.
I don't think he came to me with an opinion. He gave me the charter a year ago that he gave you. And it clearly says in there...
Well, I got a call with word, almost word for word of what I had said to my supposed attorney, uh, from you rather angrily about it and how dare I question it. And I take issue with that.
You did, two weeks ago?
No, it's been more than two weeks, sir.
Two weeks ago, you brought it up for the first time in a long time.
Well, I can disprove that. And I don't know why it has to come to this, but that is incorrect.
If we could rise up the discussion just, just a tad, you know, I, I think that the bottom line here is that we, we have a, a question of, of law and policy and legislation over which reasonable minds can differ. And, and while I respect the position of, of the mayor and the city attorney, I, I have to respectfully disagree with, with the bottom line on that. And, and I think, I think we should just, I guess at this point, leave it at that, contemplate how, how we're going to move forward on the, on the budget and, and move on with the, the rest of the agenda because the, the staff here has been sitting here, listening patiently to this for, for some time.
Well, I've sat here quietly while the three of you have discussed this with the mayor, and this is what I would say. We were all in the room and we, we were all introduced and we all had knowledge of. Now, if Nate has had questions that have, have been asked outside of this room, I would not have firsthand knowledge of that. But I know that we all sat here and I know that we all approved the purchasing agent's position. We all approved the auditor's position. We all met the new staff and not one person sitting here in this room at those times said a word. And I would just like to say one thing before we end this up. And then I think you're right. I think we do need to end this and move on with the rest of the agenda. The three people sitting at this bench that received the email from the union representative are the three people who have an issue with that. And that letter was emailed out two weeks ago. That's when people started telling me, "Hey, you know what? So-and-so's got a problem with this position. They, they think it needs to be voted on." Those same people have never said anything to me, except I will say that Nate Watson, a year ago, did bring it up. And I know that to be true, that he was worried about that position. But nobody else has. And I'm gonna refuse to believe that the letter didn't have something to do with this, since it's all in tandem and since the talk that, you know, the people that are talking to me are saying, "That's where it started." So, you know, and these are people that are involved too and know what's been going on with this particular union rep. So, I think the whole idea was that there was question of whether or not the mayor could hire a chief of staff. And that's what the union reps' letter was about. And that's what some of the council people questioned. And I think when they found out that, yes, the charter allows for it, yes, there may have been a mistake on what the charter allows for, now they're going after the secretarial position that's always been there. And I, you know what? I, I can't stop you from not voting on the budget, obviously. I wish that there was a problem with the budget that was holding it up, but there's a problem with a meeting of the minds on what the mayor's duties are and what the council's duties are. I happen to be the only person sitting up here who's not an attorney, so I'm really not gonna have a battle of the law. What I'm telling you is, everybody was here in this room, introduced to these people, and not one word was vocalized at that time. Nothing's been vocalized in here until that letter went out. And the two people that didn't get it are the only two people on the council that are not attorneys. So, you know, I, I think that's a little interesting of the timing, but again, let's just shut it down and we'll hold some more meetings to pass the budget. But, I feel like I'm the odd man out here. You three got the letter. You three are the attorneys debating the legality of the city charter. And you three are the problem, have a problem, obviously, with what the mayor's doing managing the city. All I can do is sit back, cause you guys aren't gonna vote on the budget and there's nothing I can do about that. But I would like to know, do you plan, can we go ahead and postpone the public hearing so that we don't have to have two public hearings? Since it sounds like we have to extend it? Cause I don't really want to do all of these questions twice, you know? And, you know, I think we can have just one public hearing the next time, if that's all right.
I don't think we can legally do that again. Yeah. The council does not feel they're ready to get to the merits of the public, the budget at this time, at the time of the, in place for the public hearing. A motion could be made to postpone it at that point.
Would you guys agree to do that, since you're not ready to vote on it?
Would it not be to extend the, the, the public hearing? Because, uh, we've already put out notice and it will, could be that we have people that attend to come tonight.
If you wish to take some testimony tonight, let, let the people speak to extend, set their hearing ready to do that. You can do that, then, and then extend it or postpone the, the balance of, not close the public hearing until after next week.
Yeah.
And I just would say, for those at home, this is a, in my opinion, a very lean budget. I, with the help of Dennis, put it together. We did not have any budgeting str... budget. I, with the help of Dennis, put it together. We did not have any budgeting strategy, any nuances related to the levies. We identified the expenses based on 2014 actual, and put together what I think is as quality a budget as can be put together without a finance director for the city. I'm not going to tell you it's perfect. I think we'll find out, once we get a finance director, that there are areas of improvement. The levy will be set, and so we'll have to budget accordingly. And, and I honestly think it's, it's a good budget. I'm proud of the budget we put together. And it's unfortunate that this sideshow's going on, but. And, and so questions that people would have about the budget that I will try to answer, as I told each of you two weeks ago, that I am not a finance director, and so if I tell you I don't have the answer, I'll get you the answer. It's not that I'm trying to dodge questions, it's just that frankly, I may not have the answer. But it's, Mr. Ringenberg found out, who gave me some questions, I did research and get him answers, and, and I'll certainly do that for, for any of you who want them.
Thank you.
We, we still have some items on, on the agenda under the public hearings, I believe. I, I have some questions re, on 5F.
Are we, have we exhausted the mayor's budget? Nobody has questions in regards to-
Well, the mayor's budget is, you're correct, 5A.
And that was, you had brought up that you wanted to talk about the mayor's budget, so.
Sure.
I haven't left that yet. If you have no questions, we can move on, I guess.
Uh, no, I do.
I could go ahead with mine if you're-
Yeah, sure.
Okay. I'm going to have some questions for department heads, and if you could come up, because it's just hard to hear, and especially if you're watching from home. I'm going to start with Don Gross. I've got some questions for you. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page when it comes to certain different items in the budget. So my question is, if a council member reported to their constituents that the city planned to spend 1.3 million dollars to assist a number of housing development projects such as Playland, but that there are choices being made in funding the rehabilitation of historic buildings, where we made flat at 32,000, can you explain to me what that would be about, and whether that would be true, false, or maybe a little misleading?
What was the number?
1.3 million.
I assume you're referring to the 1.3 million that is called under the Housing Development Fund, under the Community Development Block Grant section of the budget. Those funds are essentially representing a variety of projects. Approximately half of it is actually for 125 West Broadway, because those are CWBG funds that are passing through, a project at 28th and First Avenue, and perhaps a project at South 19th Street, but none of those funds would be going to Playland Park.
Okay.
As far as the historic rehab program, we had a program, we received a grant, one-time grant to Iowa West, and basically what you see is the remainder of what needs to be spent, or our estimate, estimate of what we are planning to spend.
Is that the 32,000, then?
Yes.
Okay, and that was just what's left of that grant?
And that's an estimate.
Okay. All right. I think that's it for yours. There's some TIF questions, but I think those will have to go to the mayor, because they probably have to do with some prior areas. Thank you. And Larry Foster, out of town?
Yeah, Terry's here.
Terry, thank you for coming.
I promised Terry he'd be kind to him.
I'll be nice. Terry, if a council member reported to their constituents that spending on parks and recreation increases by 1.1 million dollars, with $550,000 will be spent on Les Fest, and then more money to expand the network of bike trails, would that be true, false, or misleading statement?
Well, one I would ask in regards to the 1.1, where specifically in the budget are you seeing this increase?
It is a section of the budget that, that's called Recreation and Culture, so it not only includes your department, Terry, but the library.
Oh, okay.
Well, I can't answer the Les Fest question. I've been here a year, so last year's budget was already established and approved when I came on board. Les Fest was not identified as a line item within the budget in what is our current budget. With the budget that you're hoping to approve, it is, we established as a separate line item. It's $550,000, and that amount of money is, has no tax dollars involved with it whatsoever. It's covered entirely by grants, sponsorships, and private money completely. So there is no net effect to the budget in terms of that $550,000 showing up in the budget.
Okay, so no, no taxpayer dollars are spent on that?
On Les Fest, correct.
Okay, all right, great. And then, do you have any information then on the expanding of the network of bike trails? How much actual taxpayer dollars is going into that, or is it, I know there were some grant monies from-
MAPPA.
MAPPA, yeah, thank you.
Correct. We have two sources of funding from MAPPA that are over a million dollars, and there is some city tax dollars that are the match to those funds. So those would be traditional, they're either 80-20 splits or 75-25. I don't have the exact dollar amount, but I know one of them was 750,000, and I'm guessing the other one's probably 400 and something to make that 1.1.
Okay. So I could probably, when Larry gets back, he could give me how much those matches.
Sure.
Okay.
I, I think part of that's in the CIP as well.
Right, yep.
All right, good. Well, that should do it for parks. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Now, I don't know, Mayor, if I've got questions as it relates to things that are in TIF, do, do those go to you, since we don't have a finance director right now?
Well, Dennis is here too, so between the two of us, two, two halves don't make a whole, but we'll see if we can get there.
Okay, I've got, actually, there's going to be a couple of them. If a council member reported to their constituents that the budget contains more money for economic development, 1.1 million dollars will be spent on Bass Pro shop building, a city-owned building. Over 1.5 million would be spent next door at Mid-America Center, and MAC operating losses were down last year to 645,000. Would that be true, false, or maybe a little misleading?
Most of that is not TIF, but that would be correct.
The, the, what we did last year, Art did for the first time, was to do what we did this year with the Los Fest, is that rather than report the deficit number, and there, that's not, Los Fest has no deficit number, but in prior years with the Mid-America Center, we reported the deficit number. Last year, Art started reporting the expenses and the revenues. And so that 1.5 is, is an expense. The, in a little dispute, Nick's one of the representatives on the Mid-America Center, Nick said it was like a 59,000 loss last year. I'm showing in the state audit that the operating loss at the Mid-America Center was 158, 483. The city had capital outlay, which was improvements made to the facility of 217, 262, and then we paid Caesars a management fee of 270,000, which totals a little north of 645,000 dollars. So, yeah, in theory, I guess you could say that the expenses were 1,505, but there are revenues that offset that.
Well, that's what I was going to ask. So, you know, when I'm going through here, and I see that, because I, it is unfortunate that it's not set out where you have, and I realize that's not how we do the budget, but, you know, when you have income and expense, and they're not all showing in the same place, I think that, you know, if a person doesn't know how to read this, it can be really confusing for them, especially with that, because I, I have to kind of go through, because there's a lot of places-
Yes.
-where there's income that comes in, you know, there's grants that are coming in, there's money from the county, there's revenues from, from the arena. Can you tell me what those all add up in reference to what's spent down there? So, because I want to make sure the taxpayers know that.
Well, if you did, if you did the math backwards, if, and it's making the assumption the 1.5 million is correct, then the operating loss was 158,483. And so it would be 1,342,000 ballpark number. In regards to Bass Pro, the city, the county contributes 192,560 dollars. The city annually contributes, and this annual contribution doesn't change, is my understanding, Dick or Dennis, correct me if I'm wrong, is 787,458 dollars. That's the maximum contribution from the city. The, and so to that end, if, what was your number that we contribute? The number you gave is higher than what we actually contribute. Iowa West contributes 1.1 million dollars, and we get 607,583 in rent. And then that pays the principal and interest payments on the mortgage, and it pays the property taxes on the building. And then the county captures the property taxes, which I think were in the 1,001 range.
I think that TIF district collects about 1.7.
1.7, then the 788,000 is transferred to the city.
To pay, to pay our deal, so it's left pocket, right pocket.
And then the balance of that is paid back to Iowa West.
The left pocket, right pocket transaction.
So in the end, does the Bass Pro cost the taxpayers money once it's-
No, actually, ultimately, I think it will make the taxpayers money. Of course, this is a decision that the council will make at some point, but in approximately December, or January 1 of 2019, 2019, all that debt will be gone. The city will own a building debt-free. The city then has an asset that they could sell to an investor, and actually could recoup money, I believe.
But in, like, at the end of the, at the end of the day, when I look at this budget, and I take everything that's going out towards the Bass Pro, and all the money that's coming in towards the Bass, Bass Pro, is it a wash?
It's a wash.
There's no money spent by the taxpayers?
No money spent by the taxpayers.
And never will be, because Iowa West guarantees, and, and we remember, Art came back and restructured the debt a year ago, or 18 months ago. Well, I can tell you exactly, because it's on this flow chart. It was in April of '14, the new payments started. I don't know when he negotiated. But the payments got higher so that when the Iowa West guarantee ran out in 2018, we weren't standing there with our pants down and, and had a risk. And so we increased the payments to retire it in conjunction with the end of the guarantee by Iowa West, which increased the amount of the payments, which all has been borne by Iowa West.
Okay.
The revenue that, that it generates in itself pretty much covers the property taxes, and then Iowa West fills up the, the remainder.
Okay.
So they're always going to cover what's left.
So if somebody was led to believe that the city's spending taxpayer dollars on the Bass Pro, that just wouldn't be true?
Well, they are, but they're getting it back.
Okay, so it goes out, but it's-
We're taking TIF funds and using it to pay the city's share of their agreement.
Like I say, it's out of your left pocket and your right.
Right, so it's still a wash, okay. And the budget didn't increase to cover that?
No, no.
All right. I think that should do it on that issue. Thank you. And then the last one I have is just, Mayor, that, if a constituent was told that there's going to be $180,000 citywide image campaign, when I read the budget, I don't see that, and when I read your notes in the budget, I don't see that the taxpayers are going to be paying.
I did allude to that in the narrative that I gave to the council, and, and I don't have it in front of me to read. I hope I didn't mislead you, but you saw in the strategic plan, the staff, and I think the city in general thinks that the city of Council West suffers from an image, and we would like to rebrand our community, do an image campaign. I promised the voters that when I ran for this office. I approached Iowa West and asked them if they would fund that campaign. They said they would fund 50%. I, I gave you a wrong number when I said 180, because it's actually 160. So they would ask us to submit a grant application for 80. We would need to match that with 80. I've had conversations with the Chamber of Commerce and the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and they both have indicated that they would contribute 20,000 each. I put in the budget because I don't want to be deceptive to this council, and, and wanted to be very clear, what I was doing is that I put in 40,000 for consultation. 20,000 of that consultation would be for an image campaign. That leaves 20,000 yet to raise, that I personally would go to the private sector and raise 20,000 dollars to complete that. Again, it's not 180, it's 160, it's not 160 from taxpayers, it would be 20,000 from taxpayers. Now, that pays dividends, in my opinion, manyfold, from an economic development position, from a Convention and Visitors Bureau position, and I think that the chamber and, and the Convention and Visitors Bureau agree with that. And so I think it's long needed. The last time we did it was the leading edge, that's been, Bob, I don't know, 15 years ago. So it's, it's time to readdress it. And, and I think it's important, I would hope that the council agrees it's important. I think you see by the strategic plan, the staff thinks it's important. But not 160, it's 20.
It's 20. And I wanted to make sure I got that note changed in here, that it really wasn't that much. I did have just one more question in the blue tabs. The, so the rent for city properties projected to increase by like 29,000 dollars. Do you know, I didn't see an increase so much in like the Bass Pro rent or anything, so do you know what that's for? That was in your narrative. I didn't know if you knew what we were renting that.
Dennis has got his hand up, one looking for-
We got the rent now from the library.
Library?
Yeah, because they're renting out of, of space.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
So that would be the big increase.
In the mayor's budget, there is 40,000 in new consultant expense, which includes a 20,000 planned contribution towards, and 180,000, and again, I misspoke, it should be 160, citywide image campaign, and another 20,000 in miscellaneous consultant expense. That's from the narrative that I handed out.
Okay, and then there was just one other item that I wasn't sure about under general government, and it was a rent expense, real estate, and it was budgeted last year at 5,000, this year at 26, 25. Is there some real estate the city rents that accounts for that figure?
I didn't hear it.
You didn't hear it? Oh, under general government, there's a rent expense, real estate, and it was budgeted for 5,250 for the prior year, and for this year, it's proposed at 2,006, 25. Do you know what- Do you know what that's for? I didn't, because
What I think is, is there's signings to the city rents, and I think it's done by Bass Pro. I'll have to go look at it again, because it's some, it's a small parcel of city rents, or
Okay.
I believe signing.
All right, thank you. And I think that covers it.
Other questions?
Yes.
A question regarding the recycling facility, Mr. Jerks.
Yes. Don, can you?
I'm sorry. And while you're walking up, I'll, I'll give you the, the question. That is, uh, see, 580,000 dollars more, it looks like, for the construction or rehab on, on a facility at the recycling
Yeah, what we plan on, on doing is, the baler that we currently have, doesn't have, it's a, we've got a single ram, baler, we're going to a double ram to get more compaction on the, uh, plastic containers, because when a, we don't get the weight we need to, so we get docked, because we can't get the correct weight, because the bales aren't compact, that's about 350,000. And then, as people are moving in around us, we've got somebody new to the north, Chamber is looking to buy the, the property to the south, or PCDC, and, um, what we're looking at is to put in a building for construction demolition when we recycle that material. So it's all over, because we spend numerous hours cleaning up property to the south and the north of us. So that's what, that 580 or whatever, I thought it was closer to 600,000.
Maybe, and I did see in there that there's a line item for both, uh, facility construction, which you explained, as well as the equipment purchase.
Yeah, yes, that makes sense.
And all that gets paid out of the refuse
That's all, that's right. That's an enterprise account. No, no dollars come out of the general fund on that.
I understand. But with regard to that, I was gonna ask, uh, if you, what's your ballpark? What, what sort of revenue does the recycling operations generate against the, against the expenditure that we're making out of that enterprise fund?
Well, if, the thing is, we're always trying to add new, uh, programs down there. If we, if we just stay where we are, it's pretty much a break even, but we're always, you know, for example, we went from private, um, enterprise hauling recycling containers to and from the grocery stores. We bought trucks to do that, which saved about 120,000 dollars a year, so the payback on that, you know, it's about three to five years. Is there a payback on the baler where, you know, it's gonna make us more efficient? We'll get better compaction on the bales, which then we won't get docked. But it's just something that we have to move towards, because we've got 15 years on that baler, on the current baler that we do have. With regard to the building, again, it's more, since we've got a lot of commercial moving around us, it's more from an aesthetic perspective that we don't, you know, that we have the facility looking nice. And if you go down there, for the most part, we get compliments on, you know, keeping it as, as clean as we do, even though we do have a lot of material that we go through. Last year, just to give you an idea, we had 40,000 vehicles drive through that facility.
So as a generalization, it's pretty much a break-even operation, but, uh, it's, there's certainly not a deficit.
No, I mean, with, based on, you know, the, what we're charging currently and the contracts that we have with Red River and the landfill, hopefully, my goal is, for the next four to five years, to keep the rates where they are.
Okay. As my question, thank you. Next one is for, uh, for Don. Is he still? Sorry, Mr. Gross. And this is just a overall budget question, much like the, the last item. The budget for economic development for the next fiscal year is, is proposed to increase about 26, uh, 20.6 percent to 1.7 million. That's on top of the increase of 9 percent for the current budget year, so that's, that's an increase of close to 30 percent in a two-year period.
I'd have to see what number you're specifically referring to.
Okay, well, that's, those are coming out of the, the, the budget binders. Again, for, for this fiscal year, your expenditures are increasing, it says, by about 20.6 percent. So I was just, out of the increased expenditures coming out of your department, what are the major drivers of that, of that, of those additional expenditures?
You're referring to the community development section of it?
Yes.
The major drivers of it are, we anticipate our CDPG and home funds to be pretty much stable in FY 15 and 16. We are receiving some additional funds, um, through the state, so that's why you see the increase. The, the, technically, the funds that we are putting towards 125 West Broadway are CDPG funds that are run through our office and through this budget.
And just kind of
And, and that would be the reason why, quite frankly, you know, since we prepared the budget, you know, we just learned that, I think it's a $3 million grant that we're gonna get for gun school, the same thing, a CDPG grant, which is not even included in the budget, so.
So it's, it's difficult to look at that special revenue bucket of money and make any determination of that on a ongoing, consistent annual basis. It depends on intergovernmental monies. It depends on, um, uh, CBG, road use tax money. And so, for example, in 2014, because I saw the same thing, that we're increasing by 20-some percent. In 2014, the total revenue and other sources was 149,886,000 dollars. And so, that was the actual numbers. We're still estimates for 2015. And so, if you use that logic, then I've reduced the spending by 5 million dollars, or 4 million and change. But really, the, which I tried to highlight in the narrative is the general fund is kind of, in my mind, what you should target spending in the general fund, because the other is monies that we will be getting, I assume, Greg, monies because of the interstate relocation, and having to move utilities that may be a one-year-only deal and really don't, aren't long-term effects, long-term expenses for the city. And so that's kinda what that special revenue is. It's, it's intergovernmental and
Well, I think what you would find is, if you look at the CDPG expenditures, the CDPG and home expenditures, I worked very diligently with finance to make sure that they're balanced with revenues to the expenditures. So none of those would have a general fund cost.
And that's a good thing for the city, because it's outside tax money coming in.
Back to your question of why does it went up, it's primarily the 600,000 that we're showing in the budget that will be a pass-through. That's what we project to be left of what's not drawn down on the CDPG grant for the 100,000.
Okay, well, and the, the block grants just make up a, a fraction of, of the overall spending. So I was just kinda, I guess, asking, in, in terms of the, the overall expenditures, you know, what, what have been the drivers of those? You've, you've answered that in part, and, and I, and I guess that, to, to the mayor's point, uh, we're, we're getting bang for the buck out of those, out of those monies being expended.
Yes, sure.
So that's, that's something that a, a lot of people would be interested to hear.
Yep.
Thank you. Last question is, is about the, the personnel rate, uh, pay raises.
I guess I'll handle that.
And I, I guess my, uh, question there is, uh, is that this is, uh, the, the first agreement that was negotiated was a, was a three-year agreement. And it was previously stated that, you know, the first agreement provides somewhat as a driver for, for subsequent agreements. So based upon that, that analysis of those projected increases as they appear in the budget, was the, was the net increase in terms of not only base salary, but also, uh, benefits? What, what were the added costs to the city in that three-year period?
Well, um, and are you talking about the clerical workers' contract, or the, or the budget?
The, the budget projects that.
Well, for this, yeah, for this year, we projected 2.5. You know, budgeting is not a science, it's an art. And so, the, I think the appropriate procedure is to move cautiously and conservatively. We were negotiating the clerical workers as we were preparing the budget. We didn't know what that was, but we did know what the police, um, salary increase is. We did know what the fire department salary is, increase was, and all those were 2.5. And so we used 2.5 in the budget as a safe assumption. And then, all the expenses key off that, um, the associated expenses, in, in most cases, and I say it that way, because health insurance is an individual expense and not part of a salary. But we load in all the employee salaries, and then that calculates the benefits, is where the benefits levies come from. And so, um, using two and a half then gives us a fairly close estimate of what the employee, associated employee benefits costs are. I think I told you, and if I didn't, I'll, I'll reiterate again, but health insurance stayed flat. IFRS and Social Security, I'm sorry, IFRS, yes, and Social Security, or FICA, stayed flat. Police and Fire Retirement actually went down 10 percent. All I thought, good news for the taxpayers of the city. Well, when Dennis and I sat down to prepare the budget, Police and Fire Retirement overall went up 29 percent of what it was budgeted last year. And, and FICA and IFRS went up 17 percent, and Health Insurance went up 11. So we called Allen, or Al, called Art and said, "Art, this just doesn't make any sense." And he said, "Well, it does," because he said in last year's budget, "We had excess reserves in the employee benefits account." And so, to hit that 17.75, $17.75 per thousand tax rate, I underbudgeted the expense for employee benefits so that I could draw down the reserves. And so, even though those expenses either stayed flat or went down, on this budget, they went up. And so that, as I'd said early on, I think this budget probably is, if once in your life you get a fair look at what it costs to run the city, it's this budget, because I'm not smart enough to play with the numbers. We sat down and we looked at projections that were made for the year that we're in. We went back and looked at actual numbers that were posted for 14. Dennis and I talked about it, is this too high, is this too low? We're optimistic about this revenue. Looks like, uh, gaming's going down, red light cameras are going down, hotel motel taxes are going up, and we budgeted accordingly. And I think it's, it's pretty close. Again, I think when we find out, when we get a finance director, he may find my, um, logic was flawed in some areas, but I think it's pretty close. And I think it gives you an idea. And, and the unfortunate thing, too, is that it projects a loss of, in the general fund, of 573,349 dollars. Now, nobody wants to budget a negative loss. We, we do have reserves, and I talked to Art, what's, what's a comfort level in reserves? And he said to me, "You never wanna go below 15 million." This says we have 20 million, 620, so that's fine, and, and but it's not fine, because you just can't go on in life spending the reserves until they're gone. Unfortunately, I think we found that out a little bit in the sewer fee.
That's why I asked.
And so, we gotta address it today. And, and so, in order to do that, Wendy Schultz has, with the help of the staff, has instituted new policies and procedures that will save money. We can't save our way all that way, and so we're gonna have to look at cutting expense. And so, frankly, that probably means two or three jobs, which we hope to do through attrition.
That's why I was asking about the, the pay projections, because the, the fact that salary and benefits do make up such a large
Yeah, yeah.
chunk of the budget. And
60-some percent.
Yep, 60, 60-plus percent. And, uh, and I think that you were wise to note the, the fact that we were able to keep, you know, those, uh, retirement benefits, so that actually there's a decrease, and then the, the flat, uh, on the
It, it literally
On, on the health benefits, which is extraordinary. And, and that's, I guess, what causes me a, a little bit of concern, because I, I think you wisely warned in your narrative that, you know, if, if we had suffered this sort of increase that many, that many in the community are experiencing in their, in the increase of their health expenditures, uh, that, uh, you use the, the term catastrophic.
Yeah.
And, and I think that's true.
Yeah, it could be. You know, it, it, this was a perfect budget year, for, and I, in that we, the costs, the expensive costs of employee benefits either stayed flat or reduced, and the state reimbursed us the lost property tax from commercial industrial. I was in Des Moines last Wednesday, and I point-blank asked, um, Forstall, because Gronstall had already left the room. He had another meeting conflict, and I said, "Can we plan on year-three reimbursement?" And Forstall says, "You certainly can. Both Mike Gronstall and I are committed to, to funding that." He didn't say, "into perpetuity," but going forward, is probably how he said it. He leaves the room, and Charlie McConkey says, "You'll never see year-three money." He said, "We're, we're struggling with the budget now in, in the state." So I don't think this body can plan on getting that money. I, I just, I think it'd be foolish to do so.
Well, and, and I think that the point comes to planning for, for things to be worse potentially in, in the future. I mean, that's just wise planning and projection. You, you, you plan for the worst and, and hope for the best. And, and so, so your wording in the narrative, I think, was, was cautionary. It was appropriate. It was wise. And given the fact that not only could expenses dramatically increase, but the fact that, you know, that's, given the economy and the state of, of, of government funding, we could be losing a, a lot of state funding in the future. So I guess I'm, what I'm asking next is, is what, what will be the ongoing efforts over the next year to, to plan those worst-case scenarios, to be able to make those, those cuts, I guess, to be able to make sure that we can continue to provide essential services?
Well, and again, if you're asking my position, um, we'll deal with this budget as it is for this year. I don't know how familiar you are with budgets, but, you know, if we're 573,000 dollars short, if I don't make those cost adjustments until halfway through the year, then I've gotta make up a million, 140,000 in six months. And so, we're gonna have to, the, um, cost controls need to come on the front end so that they're not as onerous on the operations of the city. And then, we'll have to be vigilant and try to understand what's happened with the state legislature. You know, we sat and talked about, uh, um, stormwater, or sanitary, and, and the fact that we may need a 25 million dollar, um, improvement to the sanitary sewer to, to meet, uh, Department of Natural Resources requirements. We, we may have expenses associated with stormwater runoff that weren't We, we may have expenses associated with stormwater runoff that we're anticipating, we may have, that could be, um, eight figures. We, you know, it's not us, but, uh, Council Plus Water Works is looking at a twenty-five or thirty million potential cost and how they deal.
Yep.
All those mandates get passed on to us, and, you know, I, the problem is that I hear you loud and clear that we need to be cautious and budget appropriately, but by the same token, you can't throw the baby out with the bath, and so you have to kinda fight the good fight and keep on going, you know? Point's well made, and, and then from the revenue side, I tried to point that out, I'm not advocating we raise anything, we're at two percent franchise fee, we can go to five percent, we can institute a levy for the Mid-America Center. We can cut costs, um, but we are capped at the eight-ten levy and at the emergency levy, and, um, I'm no great cost cutter, I, you know, you got what you got, and so it is what it is. Um, you know, we can look at alternative funding sources and talk to the legislature about that. I had somebody from Omaha tell me the other day we ought to have a restaurant tax. It didn't hurt Omaha, it generated a lot of money, and Omaha, if you don't know, does not have a restaurant tax, they've got a seat fee, and then you get taxed on the seat fee, so, which I find interesting. You pay the fee, and that's not a tax, and then they hit you a sales tax on the fee you had to pay for the seat, so you get double. They can't double tax you, so they fee you and tax you, but.
Well, and I know that they, it's worked real well for them, but I know that the public's still not happy about it, and.
Yeah. But, but benefit for us is that, and, and I guess in hindsight, I never go, I eat out three hundred and sixty-four days last year, and about half of those in Omaha, and I never sit down and go, "God, I'm not eating here anymore because of the fee," it just, it gets, all comes out of worship.
I think ultimately it's important, you know, to move forward with some of those projects that we're looking at and
Yeah, we gotta grow. The other way that I didn't say is
Assess values on the tax rules, because that's
That's it, that's the only way.
The ultimate solution, it really is, and, uh, you know, it's gonna be really important when we have developers that have solid plans, um, that work in the master plan and work with what we envision, we need to assist them in moving forward and getting those properties on the tax.
We had about two point two percent growth in taxable valuation, and, um, about one and a half percent of that came from the rollback rolling forward, so we need to generate new property tax value ASAP.
Absolutely agree that the backfill's not gonna be, it's not gonna be there, and we have to plan for that, so bring on some new construction.
Um, any other questions on the budget? Any other questions on the public hearing?
Uh, with respect to the sewer fees, I had some question, couple of quick questions for, uh.
Did you get copies of the letter from Tyson?
I did.
They, they were in the
You guys met?
And then I brought, um, which I should've made a copy of, a letter from ConAgra, I believe.
And you met with Tyson, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, I, I guess my synopsis would be, they said they understood why we had to do it, they didn't like it.
Which I think has been the overall
Are you surprised by that?
Understand.
I think that's what a lot of the, you know, some of the hotels I talked to essentially, yeah, said they were obviously not thrilled, but understood that, that we didn't have much of a choice, I mean, that our hands were tied and we tried to obviously keep it as low as possible.
We feel the same, we don't like it either, but
Right.
If there was an area of concern, it's that they didn't get much lead time
Yeah.
to plan accordingly.
And that was my concern from the beginning, is that budgets, just like ours, had been set and that were kinda growing.
That's unfortunate.
That was their takeaway, Matt, that was the biggest.
Greg?
Here.
Yeah.
Were you there?
Yes.
There, so you got about the
Marse's got it.
They're planning on coming.
I've got it.
Oh, have you?
Okay. I just was looking for it for you guys.
Oh, okay, thank you.
My, my very quick questions, what, going back to the, to the work by, by CDM Smith, did, did they produce a, a written report to, to your office?
No, but that, that is part of their requirement.
So, there, there is a requirement, but they haven't yet produced the report?
Right, we're waiting until we know what the rates are so they can put that in the, in the final version of it.
Weren't they conducting a rate study on the current rates?
Right, but you may be changing that.
Yeah, they, they have, um, defined what it's gonna cost to run the system, um, but the rate structure of how we pay those costs hasn't been determined yet, so we've bounced three or four different scenarios around.
Well, I understand that, not a science or a math major by, by any stretch of the imagination, but I was looking to review their work in somewhat more detail than the, than the PowerPoint presentation, so that's why I'd asked before if they had a, a written report, so.
Well, I mean, we could spend a couple hours if you like, and, and Ann could explain to you in agonizing detail on how we go about doing this, um, I don't, can we get a report?
Uh, it would be a timing consideration, but would you want to have to explain the methodology?
And we did go through that with Tyson, we went through the methodology and people that deal with it, and, and they had no questions about the methodology, once we explained it to them, they said, "Yeah, we, we see you need to raise the fees, and we understand where the costs come from," and, you know, one of the statements you made when we brought the consultant is, is spending taxpayer dollars, to have a consultant tell you how to spend taxpayer dollars, but the, the difficulty from the city's standpoint is, does somebody have the expertise to do the analysis, um, to a degree that covers us from legal procedures down the road? And so you get an expert that, that understands the methodology, and that ninety-some thousand on the front end could save you an equal, if not far greater amount in attorney's expenses on the back end.
Right, and, and we, we have had a number of prior studies, and Mr. Cox got me copies of, of those reports, and, uh, and yes, they are long, tedious, boring, but they also supply that level of detail that can, you can sit down and, and go through the, not only the methodology, but the different things that they considered, and, and I found those reports to be quite helpful, so that's just why I was curious.
Those, okay, well, we'll get you a report as quickly as we can, it, it won't be final because
I, I appreciate that.
We have to wait till the outcome of the process.
So, so you've provided us with the numbers on projected revenues under, under the rate increases, as well as, uh, as the expected increase in, uh, in operating expenditures, which I think the budget pegged at about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars or four percent next year. So we're, we're collecting a, a good amount more than the increase in operating procedure. What, why are we then taking sales tax revenue, that, that local option sales tax revenue out to, o- over a five-year period? It, it looks as though that after the first year, you're gonna have more than enough revenue to cover operating expenditures.
I don't, I don't believe that to be the case.
No, are you just, are you talking about the budget?
The, 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 the revenues are projected in, in the budget numbers, and when you look at the increased revenue, it looks as though that there's a substantial amount more coming in in revenue than, than is being expended.
Well, the sheet that I gave you that says sewer rate increases with three point six million dollar sales tax added, that shows, uh, we don't, until year five increases, we don't, our expenses are greater than our income.
Okay, well, you might wanna re, relook the, the budget numbers, 'cause I'm, I see here, let's see, make sure I got the right number here. Budget for, uh, sewer revenues, six point seven million dollars, up from five point two million dollars, and then, uh, then the utility expense, the, the enterprise expense goes from, uh, six point two million dollars, up quite a bit to nine point seven million dollars for, uh, for the proposed budget.
For revenues?
Uh, for expenditures.
Which, which would include, I believe, the depreciation
Right, you have to subtract out
Right.
Three point two million dollars.
Yep, so, so that's how I, I come up with that three hundred and eighty thousand dollar net increase in, uh, in, in operating expenditure.
Well, I believe what's in the budget is revenue increases in sewer fees that don't reflect the sales tax. The budget got submitted long before this concept of throwing sales tax into it.
But I guess my, my, my question is, though, if you're, if you're taking in all that additional revenue and it's reflected in, in the budget, I guess I'm still a slight bit confused as to why we then need to supplement that with sales tax revenue.
We're not gonna take that in. Be, the, what's in there budgeted is the rate necessary to generate that number, you're not, we're not, you're not proposing to enact that.
When, when he did, what he's saying is, when he did the budget, it was at that first iteration we got, which it excessively increased the residential, and so when we put the budget together, that was the number. The new numbers, since that budget was prepared, now include, at the request of council, include using the local option sales tax of three point six million to defer that out, but the numbers he turned in for his budget were solely based on reaching break-even using sewer rental fees to the
Yeah, okay, in, interesting, so, forgive me for the repetition, so, so the numbers that appear in the budget book that we received ten days ago are not, are not accurate, they reflect that original proposal that we were presented back in December.
Right, there would be a budget amendment, I'm assuming, that at the end of the fiscal year, that would illustrate the actual revenues generated by the fees, and then an additional transfer of sales tax to, you know, it's all, it's, it's a bookkeeping, an accounting thing.
Okay.
I, it doesn't matter what I generate, I mean, it doesn't matter what I put in there under that column for revenue, if the council doesn't approve the, uh, rate, the revenue doesn't appear.
Okay, I was just trying to make, make sure I
I don't understand the question at all, what's the question?
Well, I think the question is that it looks like, if you look at the budget, that, that the increase in sewer maintenance fees more than take care of the expense, but that was generated based on the original proposal, which was to increase residential thirty-nine percent or thirty-six percent, or whatever the number was, I can't remember.
That number will be generated, but it won't be generated through sewer use fees, it'll be generated through fees plus
Sales tax.
That makes sense now that you've explained it, yeah, I thought it was the current ones too, so now that makes more sense to me.
It will be the same number, it just will come from different sources.
Different sources.
And again, when, we'll have to at some point do a budget amendment that says, but again, we gotta get the budget hopefully approved before the fifteenth of March.
But it doesn't impact, impact your property tax ask?
No.
I understand, yeah, no, I'm just trying to make sure I understood the, the revenues versus expenditures, so that, that clarifies the point. Thank you.
You know, while I was sitting here, I thought of two great examples of prior administration moving things around, and for the life of me, I can't remember the second one, but one of them was, at one point, the Building Division was its own separate division, and the mayor put that under the management of the Public Works Department. It didn't come before the council to do that.
Well, that'd quite clearly be a problem, because we create and abolish departments.
Actually, it was a division of the Community Development
It was a division of the Community Development Department and then moved it all.
So we can move divisions but not departments, if we call it a department rather than, or division rather than a department?
Well, and what Dick's saying is it was a division of Community Development, they took it away from Community Development
Yeah.
and put it under the Public Works Division, so. And there was another one that was good, and it seems to me like it has to do with the Public Works Garage, but I can't think of it now, I'll think of it later, about midnight tonight, probably.
Mr. Cox, I, I did have a question regarding the, the other ordinance change, I don't know, I, I presume that you're the subject matter expert on, on that particular ordinance, or am I presuming incorrectly at it?
I guess I need to hear your question.
Well, speaking of long and tedious and, and hard to read, I, I went through all the, all the changes in, uh, in that, in that ordinance that, uh, that was, I, I, as I understood it, was driven by changes in, uh, in ID, in our, uh, regulatory requirements?
Actually. I reject five.
Okay, great, I, that was my shot in the dark, I apologize.
Yes.
A lot of those, that, that ordinance was twenty-plus years old, the terminology's changed, some of the regulations have changed, so it was primarily housekeeping, uh, there's no substantive changes in, in any of that, other than stuff we've probably been doing anyway, even though it wasn't in there because the state requires it.
Good, good segue, 'cause I, I picked up on, on some of that, that at least on paper, it appears as though that you're provided with considerable discretion to make assessments as to individual, uh, heavy users, and, uh, and I presume that that was something that was being dictated to us so that there wasn't any question, and Dick, this may be for, for you, whether or not that would potentially open the city to claims of disparate treatment between users.
Is it paying for the, uh, their higher demands, their charges?
Uh, yeah, well, and, and as for re, re, permitting requirements, whether or not they would be able to receive a permit and how they would be able to operate under the permit, so it, it appears as though it provides additional discretion to, uh, to Public Works, and I'm not questioning that at all, I'm just, I'm just wondering how, how that works in a, in a legal sense, and if that has been, I guess, foisted upon us by, by DNR.
Well, can we, can we look at some specifically, I guess?
Yeah, and I, I don't wanna take up a, a lot of time.
While you're looking, my other example was Denny Coolman, who I don't know who Denny used to report to, but now reports to the Parks Department, that building maintenance area.
Uh, yeah, under the language and the discharge permits under, uh,
Nice to know.
Five point ten, point one-ten, uh, that's just a, an example of where it gets in, and the subsequent sections on that just kinda says that the, the director is entitled to make determinations about who receives the permits and how they're, how they're able to, to operate, and not so much about the cost, but I guess just the general operating parameters, so.
Under five-ten, point one-ten?
I, yeah, I think it was, and, and I did not print it all out because the ordinance goes on for about nineteen pages or so, but, uh, I, I take it that's one of the things that you were alluding to, that, uh, you, you're now documenting some of the things that were being done before but hadn't been documented. Did I kinda get that right?
Well, I think one of the things, I'm not seeing where it is, I'm not seeing it in that section that you're referring to, but, um, there was some things that, um, that we kinda strengthened to make sure that we had some choice in taking what an industry provides.
Mm-hmm.
We didn't wanna leave it open anywhere, no matter what they produced, we were forced to take it.
Right.
So I, that may be a section you're referring to.
Well, and I know that you have to have some discretion too to protect not only public safety, but also the, the integrity of the equipment and operations, so.
The only section I see where really the director has, where it was added, is, uh, five point ten, point oh-four-oh, specific pollution limitations, and it has to do with metals, and it says, uh, we add And it says, we added discharge limits for the following pollutants shall be determined by the director on a case-by-case basis. In no instance shall the total allocation for all industrial users exceed the maximum allowable industrial loadings. In other words, the state tells us, when it comes to metals, you're allowed as a city to discharge as much. The way we had it before, each industry, what the industries had a limit, but it's possible if all the industries contributed those limits, it would force us to exceed ours.
Okay.
So this is why we're saying, these are your limits and we're going to regulate what you discharged us to make sure that cumulatively, we're, we're not put in a position where we're in violation.
Yeah, you can then have a, have an obligation then to administer that.
Right.
That makes perfect sense, and that, I guess, drove back to my original question is, how much of this was being driven by updates in DNR requirements? And I think you, you've done a pretty good job of answering that.
Another provision in Greg is, is in five ten, one ten, super G, permit modification, the terms and conditions of the permit may be subject to modifications by the director during the term of the permit, but then in the next section, there's an appeal process of that too, so.
I mean, we do regularly modify. They come up with renewal, and even then, sometimes if they find they're not meeting their permit requirements and they need a little cushion in their limits, we'll reissue the permit to keep them out of violation, because we have the capacity to do that.
Thank you.
Could I go back to five B? Thank you. In the development agreement, I, I noticed there's a minimum assessed value, evaluation, but, but I don't notice that they can't, they're expressly contractually obligated not to try to raise the, I guess I'll call it the Griffin pipe precedent. And I know that's something I've talked with Sharon in quite a bit, and I think she understands that topic far better than I do, but I, I thought I'd bring that up because I didn't see it in the, from a, from a legal point of view, I didn't see it in the contract. And to me, not contesting the, the low, not contesting the minimum assessed value doesn't preclude you from contest, declaring it all equipment and getting it that way.
Not being a lawyer, I, when I read it, Nate, the reason I hadn't brought it up is that, that it, they can't contest that minimum for any reason, it's going to be at least that through 2033, which is when the agreement ends. And I wasn't sure if anything that was put in the development, that was going to be one of my questions, Don, is since there's an end date to the development agreement, would it matter what's in there if it's going to end on that day? Because that is a concern. Their equipment is the, you know, the exoskeleton for that building, and I don't want another Griffin pipe incident where they're going to say, well, the whole building is equipment, because if you took the racking system out of it, the building would basically collapse, so.
So is the question whether we can extend the date of the minimum assessment agreement?
No, if they agreed in there, because one of the things I had wanted to see in there, and that's what Nate's talking about, is that they're, at no point now or in the future could they ever claim the building to be equipment instead of real property, but I don't know if it would survive the development agreement's end date anyway.
I'm not an attorney, so.
I don't know, but in the meantime, I.
In, in, in my opinion is, 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 you know, it's been drafted by Allers Cooney Law Firm. I mean, we put it in there because of that very point. We wanted to have it understood that if you say the, your capital investment and taxable value is twenty-seven million, well, that's where we're going to tax you at. The assessor has the obligation, I guess, to put that in at twenty-seven million, doesn't mean that he can't put thirty-five million on there, twenty-nine million, it's, it's his discretion. As far as whether or not a minimum assessment agreement is defendable, I guess that would be a question probably for Allers Cooney.
Now, Don, is there a, a term on the amount of, of the abatement time as well as a cap?
Yes, there is.
So if, if they are effective in getting a lower minimum assessment agreement, they're essentially reducing the amount of rebate they're getting back as well, is that correct?
That would be correct. I mean, if it was one million dollars, then you're only getting a rebate on one million dollars. But the agreement is very specific as far as fiscal year and the percentage to be rebated through fifteen years. And then there is a cap of, you know, eight point nine million.
I'm not so certain that that wouldn't be an indirect result, you know, they could be clever about.
Well, and, and that's it, you know, I don't, I don't know.
I don't know the answer, but that concerns me.
I just, I want to make sure, and Dick, have you reviewed it?
No, I've not.
Okay.
But as Don and I were just discussing, if the value goes down, the value of their rebate goes down as well.
Well, until that, until the end of the, the period, which that period's fifteen years, right?
Correct.
Yeah, and, and that, I realize, you know, it's what happens after fifteen years that I have concern about, and I'm, I just, I had hoped there'd be something in there that said that, because I think if they contested its being real property and it would reduce the minimum value, and I think you've tied it up pretty good, that they have agreed to that minimum valuation.
Yeah.
Councilman Watson's concern is that they could protest it based on?
I, you know, I do, I'm not an expert in this area at all, and I'm just concerned that you, you tell me that I can't protest it based on X, but you haven't prohibited Y. I can protest Y maybe, and if that incidentally affects X, well.
Well, maybe you can protest, but quite frankly, you would be in default of the agreement.
How so? Because I, I haven't contested.
Because you agree, you agreed to twenty-seven million. If it's not taxable at twenty-seven million, why are we obligated to provide them anything?
And I may be wrong on this, I'm not an expert on this one.
Even some of their state assistance may hinge on that.
It just seems to me that if it doesn't, if it, if it has no effect that would harm them, then putting it in there couldn't hurt from our point of view. And I don't know if it can be forever, I somewhat doubt it, but I don't know. It would seem though that if you're going to be getting something that you could tie something with the land, but I don't know. I, I'd like to see it if we could. Fifteen years isn't a whole lot of time, and then we give a lot of tax breaks so they, with the theory that they'll be here a while and pay full freight in fifteen years, and then what if they pull the rug and don't pay full freight? That doesn't seem right.
Nate, I think that the, where I found that it kind of put me at ease was, this provided however, that the developer shall not seek a reduction of such actual value below the assessor's minimum actual value in any year, so long as the assessment agreement shall remain in effect, and that remains in effect till June of 2033, so.
So is, is the concern during the term of the agreement?
Far, far less so. I, I'm, I, I have a little bit, but I think it's probably not. I, I'm, I'm worried that if we, whether we can tie it afterwards, and if we can, I.
If we can, I'd like to.
I, I would like to, because that's the whole point of giving them TIF, is that eventually they're going to pay full freight, and I don't want them to get tax breaks and then not pay tax at all.
Right, and once they get all of them after fifteen years, and this isn't to say they'll do it, but let's remember too, that this is, this could very well be phase one of a larger project, and most, I think a lot of your expenses typically are in that phase one, because you're doing all of your, you know, site studies and soils and all of that, but, you know, so I just don't want it to be that we get all of our TIF, fifteen years is up, we're going to go straight to the courthouse and claim it to be equipment, and it comes off the tax rolls after they've gotten all the benefit, and that's where my concerns have been, and has been from the beginning, once I saw how the building goes up.
If, if the question is, can you, can you bind the, the company receiving the benefit via the TIF agreement?
Yeah.
At least the council for the League of Cities answered that with a definitive yes.
It can run with the land or just the company, or how?
You can build that into, into the actual TIF agreement with, with the city.
Oh, okay.
So as I said, it's, it's basically a contractual arrangement.
Well, the question is, does it survive the development agreement, though? The development agreement.
Saying it does, I think.
You're saying you can write something into the development agreement that survives it?
I, I believe so, and perhaps we should ask the, the council that, that question in specific. The one that I posed to him is, well, could you do something then that keeps that developer from moving out or, or going for a, a brand-new development and seeking a new TIF arrangement? And, and his response was, absolutely. And in providing that TIF benefit, you can, you can have the, you can have that concern signed on the dial line that, that obligates them past the, past the term of the TIF agreement.
And I imagine it's got to expressly say it survives the agreements.
Yep, it has to require some good contractual drafting, but, but entirely possible. And, and to, to the other question, well, what, what about assessing the value afterwards?
Yeah.
I was just talking with Melissa, and perhaps we could engage the council on this question. Maybe I'm just a victim of my basic property law class in, in law school, but as I, as I recall, anytime you, you add equipment, that, that constitutes a fixture, and, and all the, the equipment that they're talking in there does provide, attached to the ground and to the building, that, that then becomes part of the real estate, and that, that they would have a very difficult time.
But equipment. Though there is, there is, the Iowa Supreme Court, though, has that case that I'll call goofy, I think it is, with the greatest respect to them.
Supreme Court goofy?
Yeah, with the greatest respect, I disagree with their opinion. They, they, I, I, my, I don't have it in front of me and I haven't read it in a couple of years, but it, it's something to the effect of, to the extent, something, even if it's attached to the ground, if you can classify it as equipment, as if it were personal property, even though I would call it a fixture, you get some sort of ta, major tax break where we had to end up not charging them taxes for several years, or we rebated it or something.
It's, it's all about whether it's involved in the manufacturing process. If it's involved in the manufacturing process, it's exempt.
Iowa does not have tax on property and equipment.
Correct, and isn't that what happened with the Griffin pipe thing? They tried to claim an entire building that they use as a furnace or something.
So I think they've kind of preempted the traditional rule. Because Nebraska, I think Nebraska tax, yeah, I'm pretty sure Nebraska taxes, but Iowa doesn't.
Yep.
So what are the advantages?
No equipment rule.
So they didn't have a property law professor, example.
You're bringing back Nate here.
Kent Garrett, I think, is going to be here tonight.
He'll be here tonight.
That's a certain question, but you could say is, hey, if we extended this out for twenty-five years, what would you say to them?
Well, I mean, I kind of just want it to be in perpetuity, if it can be, that they will never claim the building to be equipment instead of real property.
But what if the assessor wants to assess it at fifty million in thirty years?
Well, then they got the benefit of the bargain and they're making a lot of money hopefully from the business.
That's a risk they're taking, otherwise it's a risk we're taking that in fifteen years it becomes equipment, so. I'll ask Kent about it tonight, and I mean, I know that I brought this up to Mike Dellinger, that this was going to be an issue for me and it needed to be in here, and I asked him if it was. I think he felt that probably the minimum assessment covered it, but I'll discuss it with them tonight, and hopefully they would just agree to that amendment, and, because I know that they need this to move forward with a lot of things. I hate to hold them up, but.
If they have a problem with it, it would say something.
Other public hearing questions?
Anything else on public hearings? About ordinances for third consideration? Resolutions?
On seven C, would that be a, a board that was appointed by the mayor and open meetings laws, or are they a private, are they a nonprofit?
Larry's not here, but they.
Just wasn't clear.
Yeah, the grant application went through the parks department. It was a, Terry Mayno.
Which one are you talking about?
The Mid-America Center Entertainment Grant.
So what was the question?
Is the board, is it appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the, or is it a separate nonprofit board? I'm just curious, are we creating?
It's a separate board from the MAC board. In the discussions we've had, we've talked, it would be prudent to have probably a member from the MAC board on there, but not to have, you know, the majority or whatever, but the, the board would be developed as an independent group from the MAC operations, from the MAC board.
I'm sorry, when you say independent, do you mean it, it's not a city-appointed board? Or that it's a city-appointed board, but it doesn't answer to the, the Mid-America Board?
Correct, does not answer to the Mid-America Board.
But it'd still be a city, like, would the mayor still pick, pick the people on the?
I don't know if there was anything specifically referencing the city.
They didn't discuss that, or at least I didn't discuss that with Larry. They wanted, what they want is an independent review of shows, and for those of you who don't know what it, they're, in Omaha, they always had a huge promotion fund, two million dollars. If you wanted to present a show, you'd go before their promotion review committee and they'd say, we'd cover you up to twenty thousand dollars. And Iowa West had always given us a grant to do that, and frankly, I was kind of surprised in the last year. Sue Ellen Overton apparently woke up after six years on the board in, in conjunction with the Hank Williams, is that who it was?
Yeah, that last, yeah.
Concert which lost money, and they said, well, we're going to take money for the promotional loss and put it against the promotional fund. And Sue Ellen said, well, that isn't how it works, which is always how it worked. I sat on that board forever. She went to the Iowa West Foundation and alleged that we were inappropriately using the money, which we weren't, but with this new grant, which is a hundred thousand a year for two years, and they, they said they want some review board that, rather than the Mid-America Board, who's an intermediary that says that the Mid-America Center Board has to go to them and say this is okay to use the money for, and they want it, I think, done prior to the show.
So what we're actually looking at is a representative from the arena commission, a representative from city staff, and a representative of the Iowa West Foundation, and then an alternate for each one of those positions, with the idea that if the decision has to be made rapidly with an alternate, hopefully we'll have three people that can meet on the issue. And what happens is the, the Mid-America Center Director will have, or General Manager, will have possible shows he could bring in, and what he'll do is, he'll show a break-even scenario, he'll show a win scenario, and he'll say, show a worst-case scenario. When he shows a worst-case scenario, that's when you're putting money at risk. And that's the amount of money you're putting at risk for that show to come in forward. And that was not specifically said, that's what the funds for, that, on that one show that Matt was referring to, but that's in fact how we established those.
And then historically, how we've done this is it's a match, just like other Iowa West grants, fifty-fifty, and our match is our loss at the arena.
So, so this is kind of a change in the business practice of, of how we formulate potential for, for gain and risk on an individual?
Show, based on what Sue Ellen Overton went back to the Iowa West Board and said, hey.
Because when I read this, I, I was wondering about not only the, the potential for, for overlap with the MAC board, but also with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, so, but if, if this has a much more finite, limited role for purposes of that business practice, then, okay, I, I get it a little bit better.
So that's why we didn't discuss that it'd be mayoral appointed because of.
That makes sense, thank you, thank you.
So, okay, and I was just a little bit confused, because then I saw the, the article on the nonparel saying that they were basically booked solid from now and through the next year, and I thought, well, it sounds like they're, they're doing pretty swell over there, and so.
And, and the exhibit hall side is doing very well, and the convention center, getting a, a big act, and, and that's what they're truly trying to do, is getting a, a, some sort of a performance in the arena, on the arena side that will really have community support.
Yep, given that you're talking about attendance and ticket sales, yeah, I can see there has to be some risk calculus put into the equation. Thank you for that.
I think it's probably, in light of our earlier conversation, prudent to have Mark come forward and talk about seven A.
What we're doing in the IT department, we're changing the focus of what most of the people do within the department. We have one person that's primarily focused on our core applications, and that being Munis Financial System, Kronos Timekeeping. With that, we want to do cross-training and have additional people that do, do application support on more of a full-time basis. So we, we have five core applications. We have Munis, which is the financials, HR system. We have New World, which is our police department app. We have Firehouse for the fire department. We have Kronos, and I'm leaving one out. In four, thank you in the back. N4, thank you in the back. And that's basically our asset tracking and management and many other things, preventative maintenance schedules and things like that. So what we're trying to do is focus on the application side to make, find and/or improve processes, provide more online capabilities that we don't have today, citizen self-service payments, employee self-service and payments, different, or employee self-service, both for benefits enrollments, employees' husbands, and so on and so forth. Right now, we don't have the bandwidth to do a lot of these things. The city does have a lot of the software required, we just haven't taken full advantage of all the components that are in the software. So what I'm doing is restructuring the team to where there's fewer people doing more hands-on on desktops, servers, things like that, and focusing on the application side. And that's what the purpose of Resolution 7A is about.
And do I have it right, there are also some cross-training going along?
There is.
Because as I understand it right now, they're kind of not, they're not, there's not a cohesive, if somebody's gone someday.
Correct.
There's no one else that would be there to do it, or if they're busy, you can't shift the work.
Correct. And so what we did is, we've implemented a ticketing system to help at least understand the demand.
Excellent.
And then we're also sending people to training, because a lot of training, most of the staff haven't had any IT training since they've been here, and we've had people here from 40 years down to six years, and myself now for four or five months. So what we're doing is focusing on some of the training aspects, especially for the cross-training purposes, because a lot of things either do fall, either fall by the wayside, don't get completed, or have to wait until somebody's either back from vacation or sick. We want to be able to provide the service in a timely fashion, and tracking the demand plus having the cross-training available for the staff, we can meet those demands. And then also increase the amount of bandwidth from a person perspective to do applications more parallel than singularly the way we do today, so.
So this will take position changes, which is why he's bringing it in front of the council.
Right.
Our position changes.
Very well-done package.
Thank you.
And then on the budget, just because it was the single most significant increase, Mark has planned for the potential need of two additional employees and some software, so it was in the $500,000. Left that in there. As you all know, we have a world where cybersecurity is vitally important, and we want to make sure that we're able to grow the department. When those positions get filled, if we need to fill them, we'll bring those back in front of you to fill those, so.
So right now, it's a placeholder, and approving naturally will come before you for a resolution if we so choose to go through with the filling of the positions, so.
And that may be a way to save some budget money if we don't fill them, so.
A little housekeeping, if we could, on that actual resolution, the active language under the whereas states that the following position changes. If we just change that today at the study session by an edit to read the aforementioned position changes, which are, because the position changes are all described in the wherashes as opposed to below the action statement, so. Just if we edit it here, we're good to go without an informal amendment tonight.
I so edit.
Will you bring that up then?
Do we have to bring it up tonight if there's consensus on the edit?
Yeah. If we're changing it here, so we're all aware.
Circumstances on the edit.
All right, sounds good.
So if I understand that the potential for additional positions has been built into the budget as a cushion, or?
It's in the budget. If we fill those positions, those would be new positions to the city, and it would have to come for your concurrence to add those new positions. But I did put it in the budget.
Good.
But again, it, depending on what happens over.
Very good.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Because we anticipate we may need them.
Correct.
Yep. And that would save us having to do another budget amendment.
Yeah.
So that's prudent.
But if we don't fill them, we'll have to do another budget amendment, so. You're damned if you do, damned if you don't, so.
Anything else? Nothing, thank you.
Again, there's no science to what I did, and I just tried to reflect what the costs are. Other resolutions, questions? We heard about the bond sales. Anything on the permits and cancellations? All right, we'll see you at 7 o'clock. Thank you all for sticking around late.